May I have a motion to return to open session?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now back in open session. May I have a motion to certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
So move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Ivers?
Yes.
Ms. Corrin?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
I make a motion to accept the religious exemption request for students A and B.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Ivers?
No.
Ms. Corrin?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
No.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes. Okay, very good. Our next item is honors, awards, and recognitions, and with that, I will turn it over to Mrs. Blackburn.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lyons. The first part of our agenda this evening is our recognitions, as Mr. Lyons mentioned. I'd like to do something a little unusual this evening, and that is, we have so many of our employees and students who are going to be recognized tonight, that I'd like to ask the parents and spouses or significant others of those people who are going to be recognized tonight, to please stand and let us see who you are, came to support these great employees and students. Thank you very much, we appreciate that, and at the end of the recognitions, we will take a 10 to 15 minute break, so that we'll have an opportunity to talk with all of you, so I hope that you will stay until the end of the recognitions. At this time, I'd like to ask Dr. John State and Assistant Superintendent for Operations, if he would come forward, he will handle the recognition agenda.
We will now begin our honors, awards, and recognitions for this evening. Our first recognition for this evening is the Virginia's Agriculture in the Classroom Teacher of the Year. Rick Reaver, Supervisor for CTE and Business Partnership, will introduce and recognize Marlena Preston.
I'm sorry, Dr. State, I gave you incorrect information on that, it's going to be Dr. Graham who's going to handle that right.
Okay, well, we'll ask Dr. Graham to come forward, thank you.
Glad to do it. Good evening, everyone. I would like to ask Kay Preston to come forward.[201.62][201.62](applause)
Kay Preston has been named Virginia's Agriculture in the Classroom Teacher of the Year. The award recognizes a Virginia educator for efforts in incorporating agriculture into the core curriculum. Kay teaches kindergarten at Bellevue Elementary School. She will receive a scholarship to attend the 2015 National Agriculture in the Classroom Conference in June in Louisville, and a stipend for her classroom for this achievement. Congratulations, Kay.[239.01][239.01](applause)
Continuing on, third place winner of the Lori Horn National Family Engagement Contest is our second awardee for this evening. Dr. Lois Graham, Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, will come back to the podium for this recognition. Thank you.
And this time, I would like to ask Dolly Cotrell, Principal of Prices Fork Elementary, and Jennifer Fenrich, Reading Teacher at Prices Fork, to come forward.
Prices Fork Elementary School has been selected as the third place winner for the Lori Horn National Family Engagement Contest, so it's quite an award. This recognition indicates the school, in collaboration with the community, has demonstrated innovative strategies to involve parents as partners in their child's education, and anyone that knows Prices Fork knows how strongly they value their parents and involve them in education. Congratulations.[330.22][330.22](applause)
Okay, the Teacher of the Year recognition will be conducted by Dr. Lois Graham, and Ms. Jennifer Weaver, Secondary Director of Education, will come and join her at the podium.
We are pleased to announce the Montgomery County Teachers of the Year. This is a recognition of our outstanding teachers. These teachers not only represent their schools, but they represent the many wonderful teachers in Montgomery County. Tonight, we will recognize the Teacher of the Year for each school, beginning with elementary, and then we'll move forward to secondary, and then we will conclude with announcing the Teacher of the Year for the county. I will call the name of each elementary teacher of the year first. As I call each name, the teacher will come forward, she will receive a certificate from Ms. Blackburn and Chairman Lyons, and she will also receive, she or he, will receive a crystal apple, which is being provided by Horace Mann. And we want to thank Ben Jackson, Ben, if you'll stand. He is from Horace Mann, and he provided the crystal apples for us. And the crystal apples come in two pieces, and look like this, and we're going to leave those in the box, just because they're a little bit fragile, so.[421.12][421.12](applause) As the teachers come forward, I know that several of you have family members, and your principals are present, too. If they will stand when the teacher comes forward, that will give you a chance for a photo op, and if any of you need to step into the aisle to take a picture, that is fine. So, teachers, when I call you, you'll need to get your apple, and then you'll get your award, and then you'll stop just a minute and smile for that picture. So, let me begin with, are we ready? We're going to start with Auburn Elementary. Maybe right there, but, okay. So, our first teacher is from Auburn Elementary, Anne Muma, and she is a reading specialist. Congratulations.[485.12][485.12](applause) Our next teacher is Natalie Gibbs. Natalie will come forward. Natalie is from Bellevue Elementary. She is their music teacher, and does a phenomenal job, especially if you've ever heard their little kazoo band, so, not kazoo, ukulele, yes.[525.16][525.16](applause) From Christiansburg Primary, Robin Van Canfort. She teaches kindergarten. Her principal is nice and tall, so seeing back there taking that picture, so. Patty Thompson, from Eastern Montgomery Elementary. I started to say Beeks, she used to be a Beeks teacher. She is a 2nd grade teacher.[600.16][600.16](applause) Angel Perdue, from Falling Branch Elementary, she's a media specialist.[616.16][616.16](applause) Rhonda Meadows, from Gilbert Linkus Elementary.[636.41][636.41](applause) Rhonda is a 5th grade teacher. Sarah Yacine, from Harding Avenue Elementary. She is a special education teacher.[661.12][661.12](applause) Cindy Rosenbaum, 4th grade, from Kips Elementary.[677.41][677.41](applause) Rhonda Birch, from Margaret Beeks Elementary. Eric Young, from Prices Fork Elementary. Jennifer Weaver, our Director of Secondary Education, will present the middle schools and high schools.
Good evening. Representing Auburn Middle School, we have Margaret Krissel, a media specialist.[753.23][753.23](applause) She has a beautiful new library, if you haven't had a chance to visit. Representing Blacksburg Middle School, Greg Gorzicki, who's a special education teacher.[802.57][802.57](applause) From Blacksburg High School, Suzanne Dana. From Christiansburg Middle School, we have Linda Morales Burton, who's a CTE teacher.[847.66][847.66](applause) From Christiansburg High School, we have Carrie Lyons. From Eastern Montgomery High School, we have Matt Pollard. And last but not least, representing Independent Secondary, it's Jennifer Reed.
So now we come to the grand finale. We can only pick one person to represent Montgomery County in our regional competition. So this year, our MCPS Teacher of the Year will represent us at the regional competition, is Cindy Rosenbaum, from Kips Elementary School.[953.01][953.01](applause) Congratulations to all our teachers, doing outstanding job.[972.44][972.44](applause)
And now, Joe McElandro, the Director of Human Resources, will come forward to recognize the support staff, employees of the Year nominations.
Thank you, Dr. State. In an effort to acknowledge the contributions and support staff, the administration is pleased to recognize the nominees for the 2015-2016 Support Staff of the Year from each location. Again, we're, do this similar to the teachers, if you could come up when you're recognized and I call your name. Elaine Blackford, Special Education Aid, from, I'm sorry, Eastern Montgomery Elementary School, oh, I'm sorry, from Prices Fork Elementary School. Mona Chandler, Special Education Aid, from ISS in Rivendale.[1071.57][1071.57](applause) Chadwick Jones, Custodian at Eastern Montgomery High School.[1115.33][1115.33](applause) Becky Parton, Administrative Assistant, from Auburn High School.[1187.23][1187.23](applause) Lori Phillips, Administrative Assistant, from Kips Elementary School.[1206.01][1206.01](applause) Melanie Wall, Lunch Aid, Harding Avenue Elementary School.[1265.44][1265.44](applause) And Marcy Wertz, from Administrative Assistant, from Christiansburg Middle School.[1286.33][1286.33](applause) Prior to announcing the Employee of the Year, I'd like to thank Horace Mann for providing the frames for us tonight for these awards. The 2015-2016 Montgomery County Public Schools Support Employee of the Year is Edward Eddie
Okay, Joe, thank you. Ms. Weaver will now return to recognize our Seniors of the Month for the Month of April.
Good evening. A very special highlight of our board meeting is recognition of Senior of the Month from each of our four high schools. For those of you visiting, there are photos and leadership profiles on display in the presentation in the lobby. Our presentation format includes a snapshot of each senior, a quote from their administrator or teacher who nominated them. It's my pleasure to present, we have from Auburn High School, Tim Bynum, from Blacksburg High School, Amanda Widener, from Christiansburg High School, Kevin Sears, and from Eastern Montgomery High School, Danny Knott.
It's with great pride that I introduce to you Auburn's High School Senior, April Senior of the Month, direct from the softball field, Rachel Smoot. Rachel is accompanied by her sister Olivia, her parents, Tim Smoot and Jennifer Mengel. If you would please come forward at this time.[1451.83][1451.83](applause) Rachel is truly one of Auburn High School's best and brightest. She is exceptionally well-rounded, the model student, citizen, and athlete. In class, she is a hard worker who always strives to understand the material thoroughly, and sees every task through to completion. She's a leader who sets a high bar for her fellow students and teammates. From her involvement in band to student government and softball, Rachel excels and carries herself with amazing poise and professionalism for a student of her age. Rachel is very dependable, and always willing to step in to help in any school program. Her initiative and leadership in the classroom, in band, in student government, and on the athletic field, serve to make each of these areas at AHS better. On the softball field, Rachel is a talented athlete, as well as a great teammate and sportswoman. She is fiercely competitive, yet always gracious. Her athletic ability is surpassed only by her ability in the classroom. Rachel's teachers describe her as a strong student, whose level of effort is exemplary at all times. Even as a freshman, Rachel's teachers were impressed with her work ethic, drive to succeed, as well as her strong written and oratory skills. She's also known for being well-mannered, respectful, a real go-getter, a natural leader, an excellent member of a group, having a wonderful sense of humor, and just simply amazing. Always kind to others, Rachel is known for always being very helpful to her peers in class. She is fondly remembered for her going out of her way to make a new teacher feel welcome. We are proud to have Rachel represent Auburn High School, and I am particularly proud to
Good evening, Board members, Ms. Blackburn, members of the audience. I'm delighted to be here tonight to present the Blacksburg April Senior of the Month, Julie Deutsch. I'd like to ask Julie and her family to come forward to the podium with me.[1634.88][1634.88](applause) I've known Julie since she was a freshman at BHS, and I've witnessed the positive impact that she's made as a student. Julie's earned the respect and admiration of both the faculty and her peers as a result of her exceptional leadership, outstanding academic record, community activism, numerous accolades, and the fact that she is one of the nicest kids you will ever meet. Julie plans to attend Virginia Tech next year and major in aerospace engineering. Mr. Maddox, her AP Government Teacher, had these words to describe Julie. Julie Deutsch is an exceptional student in my Advanced Placement Government and Politics class. She is the epitome of what a good student should be. She is always prepared for class, and is an active participant in our class discussions about current events. She pays attention and interacts with material. She is engaged in the learning process, and my job would be easy if all my students were as dedicated and concerned with their education as she is. Her presentation on President Wilson was outstanding, clearly the best of all the reports presented this year. Her research was thorough, and you could tell she had rehearsed her presentation, as it was sharp, concise, and highly professional. It is indeed a privilege to nominate Julie as Blacksburg High School's Senior of the Month.
Dr. State, Ms. Blackburn, members of the board, it is with great pride that I introduce to you Christiansburg High School's April Senior of the Month, Cameron Lamar Ray. He is accompanied this evening by his mother, Shanita Kraus, and his girlfriend, Latay Miles, as well as one of his favorite teachers, Ms. Lisa Ewing. Would you please come forward at this time to be recognized?[1778.33][1778.33](applause) Cameron Ray was selected to represent CHS as our Senior of the Month for the most unique reasons that we have ever considered. First, there are the friendly handshakes. First, there are the friendly handshakes and fist bumps that he offers to everyone on his way in and out of the building each day. Then there is his incredible career on the high school's Special Olympic Basketball Team. His volunteer work with the students at Christiansburg Primary School has been exemplary, and the students with whom he works are crazy about him. Finally, Cameron Ray was selected for this award because of the incredible love and support that he shows for his brothers, Kealan and Landon, as they also navigate their way through high school life. I doubt that there is a more loyal sibling to any of our 1,100 other students. His devotion came to our attention last year when Kealan scored his first varsity touchdown against Carroll County. Cameron's response can only be described as a combination of tears, laughter, and a Super Bowl-winning scream. The excitement of that night carried on to Monday morning with him announcing the play-by-play to everyone in the cafeteria. He proved equally as excited when his younger brother, Landon, took the field this year and one time even fell down during an animated sideline celebration. Cameron always advocates for his brothers to receive the recognition he believes they deserve and willingly puts their interests ahead of his own. And to that, I would just say this morning, Cameron and I were having a conversation, and I told him if his brothers didn't show up tonight, I was going to put them in ISS. His response was, "Nah, man, they gotta work." He is kind, generous, and loyal. Even though educators shouldn't publicly acknowledge their favorite students, I can assure you all that Cameron Ray would be at the top of the list of everyone who works with him. It is my pleasure to present to you our April Senior of the Month, Mr. Cameron Ray.
Ms. Blackburn, Mr. Lyons, member of the board. It is my privilege tonight to introduce to you Eastern Montgomery High School's April Senior of the Month, Zachary Thomas Wimmer. Zach's accompanied tonight by his father and his mother, David and Dawn Wimmer. They would come now and join me, please.
Band Director Stanley Bragg had this to say about our Senior of the Month. Zach has always exhibited strong leadership characteristics amongst his peers, and he always strives to do this in a positive and effective manner. He maintains a high level of performance and challenges himself as well as others around him. His sense of humor, academic success, common sense, positive attitude, and willingness to go above and beyond the necessary requirements are only some of the character traits that are appreciated by his friends, peers, and teachers. His academic work is excellent, and his sense of responsibility and commitment unending. One of Zach's instructors at a camp this year described him as, and I quote, "An unusually remarkable and dedicated young man. He will make an excellent leader at your school." Zach has indeed gone above and beyond these remarks. You will be hard-pressed to find a young gentleman who is more warm and caring than Zach. It has been a privilege to teach him in the classroom. Zach plans to attend Virginia Tech next year where he will become a member of the Corps Cadets there. Congratulations, Zach.
That concludes our awards and recognitions for tonight. We will now take a 10-minute break so that Ms. Blackburn and the board members can congratulate the awardees tonight. The agenda is public address. At each regularly scheduled board meeting, the school board sets aside up to 30 minutes for the public and citizens of Montgomery County to discuss matters of education. Each speaker will come to the podium, state your name, your address, and you will be given up to three minutes to address the board. There are quite a few people on the list tonight. It is possible that at the end of 30 minutes, we will need to take a board vote to extend the public address period, but we will cross that bridge when we get to it. With that said, our first person up is Lori Roop.
Hi, I'm Lori Roop. I live at 506 Switchback Road in Christiansburg. Board members, Mrs. Blackburn, I come to you regarding the start times for our students. But I know, Ms. Graham, you're new, so this is going to be directed exactly towards you since our last meeting. You stated that why don't we give it a trial run before we decide anything set in stone? My question's for you, and take this as you want to. Why couldn't we try it in Blacksburg, since Blacksburg seems to be more for this than the regular areas of the county? Let them try it for a year, see their test scores, see if they've improved, see if they haven't, see if they stay the same, see if they've decreased. Then I say, take it to another vote at the end of that. That's my personal opinion. I'm a single mom of two children. They both attend elementary school. I'm not for this change at all. My children go to bed anywhere between 8:00 and 8:15, Sunday through Thursday. They sleep until 7:00 a.m. And that's for me to wake them up in the morning, and yes, I have to wake them up in the morning in order to get them ready for school. I thank the Lord above that I have a mother who is more than willing to help me out to get them to school and pick them up so I do not have to pay this after-school care. But with this start time, I'm going to be forced to reevaluate my finances and pay the before and after-school care, because I'm not, right now, I financially cannot afford that. Again, I'm a single parent, and I really, really, really want all of you to reevaluate this and look at it, and I know some of you think it's not a personal decision, but it is. It is a personal decision, what you think is best for the county and best for the parents and the children. Think of the kids. Think of the safety issues. I live in the county. There are no streetlights. Who is going to put up a streetlight unless you have a dusk-till-dawn light and you're paying for that electricity? There's no illumination, and our kids are going to be catching the bus in dark. I live on a street that's 25 miles an hour, and I can tell you right now, nobody does 25 miles an hour. There was a wreck when somebody toppled over the hill and almost hit the school bus and almost hit the children getting off of the school bus. So again, look at the safety for our kids. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Eia Schreider.
Well, my name's Eia Schreider, 509 Owens Street in Blacksburg. My kids go to Harding Avenue. Thank you for giving me the chance to voice my opinion. Well, I agree with just about everything she said except for not in Blacksburg. So I'm a single mother. I work, I have two children. Our sleep patterns are different. We go to bed 8:00, 8:15. My six-year-old will wake up in time for this change, my eight-year-old, no way. I think sleep patterns are not so much per age group, but per individual. And I mean, I just don't know how to get my daughter up. So I think the same thing she said about the safety of, older kids can go out to the bus stop in the dark. You know, it's not preferable, but it's safer than elementary kids. Older kids can come home from school and do their homework, they don't need a babysitter. You know, it'd be a huge financial burden to a lot of working parents. So not in Blacksburg.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Karen Myers.
Thank you. My name is Karen Myers, and I live at 4902 Mount Taber Road, Blacksburg. I agree, not in Blacksburg. I filled out a survey and expressed concerns to my representative via email with the ability of that survey that was done and the ability to duplicate it. There were people that were taking it multiple times, so the data that you received may not have been accurate. I was not able to attend your December 16th public forum, but only 13 people did. I believe that occurred because we thought we had voiced our opinions through your survey. I'm not here tonight as a, I'm here tonight as a parent to represent my family and my 14-year-old daughter. She was not able to be here for a church commitment, she would have been here to speak herself. She's wanted to be a veterinarian all of her life. The information, the research that we did in regards to that was volunteer. Get out there, do what you can, as many situations as you can. She's 14 years old, she's a freshman at Blacksburg High School, so we've been doing that all the time. With the change in times, that's not going to be available to her. We're preparing her as her family, as her parents, to be prepared for what's next in her life. She's been taught from a very early age to regulate her sleep patterns for what she needs. She goes to bed at 10:00 p.m. at night and gets up at 6:00 o'clock in the morning. We don't tell her to go to bed, we don't tell her to get up. She's been taught from birth to regulate her own sleep patterns. Eight hours is sufficient for a healthy teenager. We currently do not need Montgomery County Public Schools to tell us how much our child needs or change our schedules negatively impact our family. She's a straight-A student, and she passes all standardized testing at the highest levels. As a professional in the field of early childhood education, I'd like to know how many of you have passed a child off to someone at 7:00 a.m. in the morning? If you choose to change these times, I encourage you to add the cost of AIDS to your budget. Those children will be riding on a school bus in the dark. Has anyone who is in favor of changing times thought about the impact on delayed openings when we are talking about putting four-year-olds at the bus stop and on buses in inclement weather? 35% of your survey will need childcare for these children. Let me just tell you, there are not enough qualified people to staff, even if we had the availability of childcare in the New River Valley. I would put money on the fact that most children will become latchkey kids. I encourage you to look at your state police sex offender registry. 136 people are listed in Blacksburg, Christiansburg, Shawsville, and Elliston. We are possibly opening a window of opportunity for them. Our children are going to go home. You've already heard two people that can't afford it. So I researched some information myself. The impact of stress on teenagers, let's look at that instead of what time they go to sleep. Your committee reports state that satisfaction with current start times, secondary schedule preference, everyone is in favor of this, minus your superintendent. Her recommendation is to change it. Your data says everybody else wants it, doesn't want it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tulio O'Reilly. Is Tulio here? Okay. Next on the list is Dawn Sexton. Dawn Sexton? Next on the list is Bob Miller.
Good evening. I'm Bob Miller. I live at 365 Mud Pike Road in the Auburn Attendants area. I served 39 years in public education, the majority of that time as a high school principal in Montgomery County. I encountered thousands of young, fine young people. My experience has been that when respected and challenged, they meet or exceed our expectations. They went to school early, they got out early, they went to jobs that assisted their families or participated in athletics, often with distant travel schedules in the afternoon and evening. Many have turned into outstanding and productive citizens. You only need to look to your board chair as an example. The proposed revision of starting times will cause complications for sports and for work after school. Moreover, the early morning times will gravely affect the most fragile and vulnerable of our school population, children five, six, or seven years of age who will be required to wait in darkness and cold through long winter mornings, many at bus stops distant from their homes. The danger of inattentive drivers and speeding log trucks on country roads, the possibility of predatory individuals, the absence of a parent nearby because of single parent or both working parents, inability to be present at an earlier after-school arrival time will compound the health and safety of these latchkey children. If you know that you have done your due diligence in surveying the parents, if you have visited our rural bus stops at 6:25 on a dark winter morning when our earliest buses must start to be able to complete both runs, then vote your conscience on this issue. If however, you have not done so, I implore you to delay a decision on this important matter. The health and safety of my grandchildren and of all children and grandchildren are in your hands. Thank you.
Thank you. I did not pay him to say that either. Next on the list is Crystal Zirkle.
Good evening. I'm Crystal Zirkle. I live at 3804 Yates Road in Shawsville. Good evening, my fellow board members of the Montgomery County School community. I want to first apologize, this is my first important speaking audience. As you can see, I'm the only person, but as I sat to prepare to write what I should speak about, a lot of issues weigh heavy on us parents in the Montgomery County community. You had stated in the previous emails that this school time change was because middle and high schoolers weren't or aren't getting enough sleep. Well, I have one of those students, and he sleeps just fine. He sleeps the allotted amount of hours, just as well as his friends do. His school lets out at 2:30. Now, practice until 4:00 to 4:30. Homework for another two hours, showers, then bed. On track meet nights, he sometimes isn't home by 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock, sometimes 10:00, and still has to do homework in his nightly routine. It's definitely hard enough now, but we make it work. In my household, all electronics are turned off in a way at bedtime to ensure both of my kids are going to sleep, which raises another issue. My seven-year-old, if the times are switched next year, my child will have to get up as early as 5:00 a.m., give or take weather permitting, in the conditions of my driveway. We don't live close to the school, so the elementary bus will probably run an hour to an hour and a half earlier than the new time constraint, making his bus run between 6:15 and 6:45. I've got to say, this is absolutely unrealistic for any child at this age. I have one question in tonight's meeting. Why cater to this future generation? This time schedule has been the same for as long as I can remember. I even had the same schedule. It prepared me for real working adult's life. And what I mean by that is, I do more by 10:00 a.m. than some folks do in a day. And yes, I'm by no means a morning person. But after practicing this schedule for so many years, at a younger age and through high school, I stayed with it. What happened with the results of all those surveys? After most of the parents I've spoken to between two schools, not a lot of the parents are happy about this scheduling. And to be quite frank, the middle and high schoolers would not be catered to, so to speak. Why not stay up an extra hour to, since school will be starting later? I mean, realistically, no one cares how many hours of sleep you or I get, right? So, the bottom line is, why are you intending on trying to fix something that is not broke? You're messing with parents', kids', brothers', sisters', grandparents', and even babysitter schedules. If this process occurs, there's no use in me keeping, working my part-time job. I'm one of those who absolutely cannot afford...
I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Kim Rhodes.
Kimberly Rhodes, 30 Colen Court, Christiansburg, Virginia. Good evening, board members. My name is Kimberly Rhodes. My husband and I work outside the home. We have a child in each of the Christiansburg High, Christiansburg Schools, one at Falling Branch, one at Christiansburg Middle School, and one at Christiansburg High School. For my family and for many other families, the... For my family and for many other families, the schedule proves to be a struggle to have family unit work in a collaborative and cohesive manner. The idea that children of a middle school or high school age are better able to perform well on standardized tests is a very broad generalization that does not apply to individuals as a whole. There are many other factors that contribute to the performance of standardized tests and the like. Having children go to school later is not going to solve the issues of those children who do not receive an opportunity to eat breakfast in the morning. It is not going to solve the issues of children that have part-time jobs after school in order to help support their families because many have one parent in the household trying to make ends meet. It's not going to solve the issue of older siblings that need to be at home to get elementary kids off of the school bus because a bus driver will not let your child off the school bus if someone is not there to meet them. The days of our older children are already long when you factor in after-school activities, which we long for our kids to be involved in so we can fight the obesity and diabetes health problems that are facing our children's lives as we speak. It is not like when we were growing up. It's a different world now. If we add the extra time at the end of the regular school day, when will those children be able to get all their homework done, special projects completed, when activities and part-time jobs are ending so late? They certainly won't get finished that extra hour in the morning when parents and guardians have to be at work. Not all families have a grandparent or a friend that is a strong, that is a stay-at-home mom or a neighbor that can help out with running kids and picking them up when they get off the school bus. There are such differences in children that I, like many others, do not feel this is appropriate solution to boost test scores. There are other solutions that do not impact so many families negatively. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Melinda Dillon.
Good evening. My name is Melinda Dillon and I live at 640 Black Bear Run, Christiansburg. I'm a teacher in the Eastern Montgomery Strand in Montgomery County. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight about the decision to make school start times. I do not come to you to advocate for myself. My children nor my household will be affected by this decision. However, I do come to advocate for the parents, teachers, and students of my community that feel as though their opposition have not been acknowledged. Some basic reasons I support opposing the school start times are, one, it will not only be a change for the students, but in some cases, it will create hardships for the families that depend on the older children in the afternoon to take care of the younger siblings. Two, it is felt that a new start time would be sending a poor message to our teenage children. Instead of preparing them for the responsibilities that lay ahead of them after high school and teaching them to be proactive by getting in the bed at a respectable time, we may be sending the message that it is okay to go to bed later and get up later. And finally, I support opposed start times because I firmly believe that the elementary school years build the foundation of our academics and school success that we strive to commit to in Montgomery County. And in order to ensure that these children grow up to be proactive citizens, we have to ensure that their physiological needs are met to the best of our ability, which of course, in this case, would be sleep. Thank you again for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next on the list is Amy Hogan.
Good evening, Amy Hogan. I live at 506 Hartwood Crossing in Blacksburg. I'm here to speak tonight against the proposed change to school start times, not because I disagree with the research on adolescent needs, but because I disagree with risking the success of our younger students to do it. I have four children, in eighth grade, first grade, kindergarten, and a toddler. I see great potential for negative impacts to our elementary-aged children, and though you have acknowledged the limited research on elementary start times, I hope we remember that a lack of research on impacts to this age group does not mean that there are not negative impacts. I largely discount the Minnesota study you considered, conducted at the end of the first year of a shift nearly 20 years ago, and with no additional follow-up research or analysis on the long-term impacts. The one substantial study that has been conducted in Kentucky shows very negative impacts to elementary-aged children, results that I find really quite troubling. Do elementary students typically fall asleep earlier and wake earlier? Yes, and in fact, also need more sleep. The organizations cited for sleep research recommend anywhere from nine to 12 hours of sleep per night for children aged five to 12. My five- and six-year-olds currently get about 11 and a half hours of sleep per night, waking at 7:00 AM for our weekday routine. In order to move our morning routine up by an hour, I guarantee you that logistically my family cannot accommodate a 6:30 PM bedtime for our children. The end result, our elementary kids will become chronically sleep-deprived. What do you imagine might be the cumulative effects of chronic sleep deprivation begun at age five? What will their adolescent struggles look like? I do support the recommendations for adolescents, but we need to be more creative about how to achieve it. Nowhere does the research about adolescents suggest achieving a change for them by compromising sleep routines for our younger children. Many school systems in fact have achieved later start times for middle school and high school students without having to compromise with earlier start times for elementary schools. We shouldn't be irresponsible with or disadvantage one group of students to help another. I urge your further consideration of the needs of all of our students and hope you'll vote not to change school start times per the current proposal. Your job is not merely about mapping routes and balancing dollars and cents. Your job as ours is to build and support a system that provides for the success of all of our students. We need not risk the future success of half of our students to help the other half. Yet we still need not ignore the research that tells us how we can better support our older students. We simply need to be more creative and committed to finding a solution that will serve all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Dennis Smith.
Dennis Smith, 4911 McCoy Road. Parents were given the opportunity to complete a survey to provide input regarding changing the start times of the schools. The results of the survey indicate the majority of respondents want the start times to remain the same. So why is this proposal being considered any further? I have a child with special needs who is missing two and a half hours of school per week for therapy. Under this proposal, the child will be missing five hours of school instruction per week. My other child is currently being watched each morning as she boards the bus for the middle school. If this proposal is approved, she will board the bus without any adult presence at home. This is a major safety concern for me, as there are numerous registered sex offenders within three to four miles of my residence. If this is truly about children starting school after 8:00 AM for educational reasons, why not start the middle and high school children at 8:10 and keep the elementary school children at their current start time of 9:00 AM? When I was in the Montgomery County School System, the school board changed the start times because of concern for the safety of elementary school children boarding school buses early in the morning, especially in the rural areas of the county as it is still dark. We are hearing that only one additional bus will need to be purchased. Our child rides bus 119. There's already a 50-minute gap from the start, from the time school lets out to her arrival at home. There are other children still on the bus. It has taken the driver over an hour to drop the middle school kids off before picking up the elementary kids in the afternoon. The other bus that runs by our home is about 20 minutes later than bus 119 in the afternoon. With this being said, it is not possible for the elementary and secondary school children to be transported in the morning with a 50-minute gap between start times. This new proposal will require the purchase of multiple school buses to accommodate the change in school times, which will create an undue burden on taxpayers who are already stretched due to the recent tax increases resulting from numerous school projects. How will the implementation of this change in the start times be funded? Within the past two years, the school system began requiring children to walk a quarter to a half a mile to a common bus stop to reduce transportation cost. I find it ironic that the school board is now considering a change in school start times that will raise transportation cost. If this proposal is passed based on the theory that children will receive more sleep and their grades will in fact improve, then we expect all persons supporting this change of start times to voluntarily step down from their current positions, including school administration, school board members, and teachers if the grades of these children do not improve by the end of that academic year. As parents, we need to receive assurance that this issue is truly based on the education of our children and not on a select few individuals' interest. I ask that you consider these issues before a decision is made. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Barbara Skinner.
I'm Barbara Skinner, 3583 Laurel Drive in Blacksburg. And the following comments pertain to textbook adoption, which is included on tonight's agenda. Last month, I spent four to five hours spot-checking several of the tomes under consideration. Unfortunately, Superintendent Blackburn is recommending the purchase of McGruder's American Government, published by Pearson. On page 613 of this text, our society is depicted as a quote, "white male-dominated power structure," end quote. Our country is portrayed as hopelessly and apparently endlessly tainted by discrimination, inequality, and injustice. I have two sons who graduated from Blacksburg High School. They didn't receive special treatment while in school. My older son enlisted in the Air Force and is currently serving in the Indiana Air National Guard. My younger son is working on double majors at Virginia Tech in math and statistics and a minor in piano performance. He hasn't received scholarship or grant money, and he's living at home to save money. To be clear, I would not like to see a glossing over of wrongs and injustices of the past, but statements in the McGruder's text are inaccurate and highly divisive. My sons should not be targeted as oppressors and as racists. I hope this board will carefully review the McGruder's text. Thank you.
Next is Brandon Rup.
Hello, my name is Brandon Rup. I live at 3050 Mark Orange Drive in Blacksburg. I'd like to add some comments to what Barbara just said, and if you don't mind, I'm going to read them. Just a few days ago, my wife and I celebrated our sixth wedding anniversary. My wife is first-generation American and an ethnic Filipino. Before we married, I spent nearly three years in Southern California. Where I lived and worked, the color of my skin placed me in the minority. Most of my coworkers and those I lived with were black and Latino. Being mostly white, not to mention having blond hair and blue eyes, and coming from the South, I was viewed a certain way, namely, they automatically saw me as racist. Eventually, they got to know me and found out their first impression was wrong. I bring this history of mine up because I think it gives me a different view than what some others might have. The textbook mentioned previously is harmful to our children and by extension to ourselves. That isn't to say none of what was written hasn't happened. It certainly has. But this isn't the issue. The issue here is how it's written and the opinion that is folded ever so neatly into the textbook along with it. As such, it has far too much potential to instigate problems between students, whatever race or gender they may be. Don't misunderstand what I'm saying. Our history and information about our government needs to be taught to our students. It's shameful that many don't seem to know the first thing about either of the two. But this textbook, and textbooks like it, isn't the way to go about it. What these textbooks teach is perpetual victimization, which does a disservice to everyone, no matter their gender or racial background. Perspective is sorely needed. That doesn't mean this perspective absolves the sins of our history. That'll never happen. But it does at least give us a broader understanding of what was going on in the world and whether we were behind or ahead of the curve, history set. Just as a short example of the people here, of the seven board members, five are women, two of which are of a racial minority. Yet somehow, we're told this country is still absurdly backward. As I said earlier, my wife and I have been married just over six years now, and I can testify, or I can safely say, that if we were constantly arguing and bickering about what any of our ancestors may or may not have done throughout history, we wouldn't be together today. We need to take a step back and realize what's really being taught to our students. Politicized and ideology-filled textbooks are damaging our children and it needs to change. And I'd just like to add to the other issue here. I've been going around District E gathering signatures to be able to run for school board, and most of the people I talked to really do not want the school times to change. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, board members, we have reached our 30-minute time limit. Do I have a motion to extend it? We still have one, two more people who have signed up, and I did notice that one of the people that we skipped over earlier has now joined us. Do we, do I have a motion to extend public address time?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes. How many more people do we have that may want to speak?
Could I have a show of hands? I have two, three that I know that are signed up. If you have not signed up and you wish to speak, would you please raise your hand? Okay, so adding two more, so that would give us a total of about five.
Make a motion. We hear the five that want to speak. Second.
All right. We already had a motion on, we already had a motion on the table. What was your motion?
My motion was to listen to the people who are on the list, but I will take Jamie's motion as an addendum and add the other two folks.
I'll second that.
Okay. Very good. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will hear those five people, starting with...
Did we do that right?
I think we're good.
Yeah. We'll, starting with, I think it's Coltrane Marinich, is that right? Okay.
I'm Coltrane Monreits. I live at 323 Newtown Road in Shawsville, Virginia. Board members, concerned parents and teachers and concerned citizens, I'm speaking on behalf of the proposed time change. I'm going to speak on inconclusive evidence, safety for the smaller kids, ideal for the working family, and teaching our young adults the real world. The studies are inconclusive, that has been done, that you're getting from, your research is from only, mainly from teenagers, not from the elementary kids. You only have a theory that I speak very loosely. The elementary kids will not, that will not be affected. So how can you make a decision on inconclusive evidence that you have, that it will work? And it looks like we are only looking at, into the small piece of the puzzle and not the big picture. Also, the safety. Doing this change will put the children in harm's way, especially on bus pickups. The time that you're proposing, 6:00 to 6:50, will put most of the school year, mostly 90% of the school year, with the kids being picked up in the dark. This can cause many problems. First, low visibility for, to see with elementary school kids that are still learning and understanding, so they make mistakes, so they can go in front of a car, and with it being dark, they can get hit. Also, also the worry of predators, either being an animal, even a human with sex predators. Would you want that on your hands? Would you want a kid to be abducted? Ideal for a working family. It is ideal... It is ideal for a working family? No, it's not ideal for a working family. It's taking more money from the families for more childcare, and with some of the families that had older siblings that can help with that childcare. Also, teaching our young adults the real world. By going with this proposal, we are not helping our adolescents to live the real world. When they go to work or even to college, you have to be there on a certain time. They are not worried about how much sleep they get. I also like to show a hands, a vote for those that are opposed to this proposal. I am opposed to this proposal. The people that are opposed to this proposal, people speak for themselves. These are the same people that put you in your chairs to speak for them.
Sorry, your time is up. Next on the list is Cindy Rosenbaum.
Hello again. I'm Cindy Rosenbaum, 1707 Honeysuckle Drive in Blacksburg. I also teach at Kips. I applaud the board for proposing to move middle and high school start times, but do not support doing so at the expense of elementary school students. I have taught fourth grade for ten years. It's my professional judgment that the earlier start time proposed would be detrimental to my students and to my own children. With our elementary school students getting less sleep, I know that more will struggle academically. My students often come in tired, and many do not get the sleep they need due to after-school and evening activities. That will get worse if they need to wake up an hour or more earlier. We can say that they need to just get to bed earlier, but I know it will be hard to fit in activities, dinner, showers, and homework. My sons go to bed at 7:15 PM. Going to bed any earlier would be difficult and would cut into our time as a family. Currently, the bus comes to pick up my kindergartner at eight o'clock AM, and his school officially begins at nine o'clock AM. Under the proposed changes, he would board the bus around 7:00 AM. He currently wakes up at 6:50 AM. This would be a dramatic change. Board members and Ms. Blackburn have pointed to solid research for moving start times for adolescents. However, research on how earlier start times impact elementary school children is murky at best. Results about elementary school children are often assumed, as they are in the article on the MCPS reading list titled "Do Schools Begin Too Early?" When we look at the recommendations from the American Academy of Pediatrics, we must recognize what is unsaid as well as what is said. While the AAP supports later start times for adolescents, it does not recommend earlier ones for elementary schoolers. In fact, as of February 2015, the National Sleep Foundation states that children ages three to five, including kindergarteners, should get ten to thirteen hours of sleep, and children ages six to thirteen should get nine to eleven hours. Earlier start times for our young elementary school children would make these recommendations very difficult to meet. We are trading the problem of sleep-deprived adolescents for sleep-deprived children. Another major problem is childcare. Many families of students I teach depend upon older siblings to watch younger ones for the time between school letting out and parents getting home. With elementary school being let out earlier and without sibling support, families will need to pay for extended childcare. There will be higher demand for childcare after school, and good quality childcare in the New River Valley is already scarce. This issue impacts me directly. My two-year-old attends a daycare that does not open until 7:30 AM. If times flip-flop, I will never be able to drop him off, and I will need to hire a babysitter to take him on days that my husband cannot, which will cost my family more. My school-aged son will also need more hours of childcare after school. Again, I'm excited that the school board wants to create the best learning conditions for all its students, and I hope that a solution that benefits all students can be found in the future, but this is not it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will go back up to Tulio O'Reilly.
Good evening. Sorry for my tardiness. Thanks, Mr. Lyons. Good evening. I'm Tulio O'Reilly from 1860 Radford Road. I have nine consecutive years as a parent in Montgomery County. I have sixteen years here in the New River Valley. I have three children at Christiansburg Middle School, an artist, two competitive athletes. And as I tallied, I have encountered one hundred and twenty-five of the people that you've hired, one hundred and twenty-five educators personally. Some things I want to say you've done well. You've hired smart teachers, administrators, and staff. You raised up smart kids, history makers, world changers, and tonight I hope you make a smart decision. In this process, your questions and concerns, I feel, have been addressed. You've hired a smart superintendent. She has thoroughly, I feel, sought out stakeholders, researched, and options. Over seventy-five hundred surveys, three thousand parents, thirty-five hundred secondary school students. She's handed you a win-win, in my opinion, and I think you need to move forward with it. There were concerns about daycare, there was concerns about older kids helping, there's been concerns about after-school. We should read what the survey says. We should see that she's saying, starting at 7:00 AM. There were concerns about sports, but we have athletic directors and principals that they said, hey, let's come up with a solution. Concern about a bus picking up an elementary school child with their parent at 7:00 AM, I think we need to be careful not to overdramatize that. There's a concern about high schoolers just taking advantage of things and going to bed later. That's a great argument, but it doesn't hold to the science that we're trying to study, the physiological issue that's in that two- to three-year period. There are concerns about elementary students rising too early. I asked educators, I went out into the schools and asked, and elementary school educators said, we would rather have children first, not after daycare, not after someone's watching them with the TV and a sugary snack at nine o'clock when they've gotten up at six, because the best foot forward is what they want to see. I asked an elementary school principal, convince me why this won't work. The problem that you're having at 8:30, is it going to change at eight? I mean, it was really hard for me to see. There was a concern about a change, like time to change, and eighteen months is a great... I mean, we turned this school system around in eighteen minutes when it snows. I mean, eighteen months. If we're going to teach students a scientific process, we should at least teach them to use science to make a decision. A decision to ignore science doesn't model good problem-solving skills, it doesn't model resilience, it doesn't model adaptation and improvement when available. Come on, Martin Luther King, he didn't go and do because of persuasion of opinion. He did what was right. Thank God he did what was right. You were not elected because of popular opinion. You were not to do your jobs based on popular opinion.
Your time is up.
Make the smart decision.
Thank you. Okay, those that raise their hand, please step forward, come on forward, please. State your name and where you're from, where you live.
Hello, my name's Chelsea Richards. I live at 1731 Bishop Road. I'm a junior at Blacksburg High School. I would like to start out by thanking the board for approving the German exchange trip to Germany this summer. I'm very excited for the trip and looking forward to it. We are scheduled to depart on June 25th, just two months and four days away. And then, secondly, I would very much like to see y'all change the policy that was ambiguous about the cause, the issue of having to approve the trip later than usually planned, so that in the upcoming years, there wouldn't be another problem with having to decide later that causes issue with planning and itineraries and the purchasing of plane tickets that it did this year. So I really hope that y'all change that policy. And again, I'd like to thank you for approving the trip. I just, I can't wait, and I'm so happy that y'all did approve this. And thank you once again.
Thank you. One more. Please step forward.
My name is Andrew Thomas. I live at 1751 Stratford View Drive, Blacksburg. I don't really have anything more to say. That's basically what she said. Thank you for approving it. I'm super excited, and I hope that you can word the, I guess, policy in a way that will allow future organizations and people to travel. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes public address. Moving on to consent items. If no board member has anything to pull from consent, we will consider consent items approved. Okay? Next on the agenda is our personnel report. May I have a motion to accept the personnel report?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Our personnel report has been approved. Next on the agenda is our financial reports. We need to pay the bills. Do I have a motion to pay the bills?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bills have been paid. Second, in that section is our financial summary report. May I have a motion to accept the financial summary report?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Financial summary report is approved. I will now turn it over to Mrs. Blackburn, who will give us her superintendent's reports, recommendations, and announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. I need just a minute for the iPad to catch up with the agenda. When all else fails, revert to the printed word. So, since the iPad didn't catch up, let's do it the other way. My first item this evening is school start times. Glasses if I'm going to read. Thank you. The district has been engaged in examination, research, and consideration of options for possible changes in the current school start times for some time. The driver for this process is the extensive research about appropriate start times for adolescents, while at the same time seeking a reasonable, earlier start time for elementary-age students. You have had the opportunity to hear from the school's start time committee, and most recently, I provided you with my recommendation, which was quite similar to that of the school's start times committee, but did make an improvement in the transportation pickup time, as well as delayed slightly the beginning of the elementary school day. I recommend the elementary school hours of eight to 2:30 with bus pickup beginning no earlier than 7:00 AM. These start times are found in many neighboring school divisions, many school divisions across the nation, and the survey results from our community indicated that an eight to 8:15 start time for elementary school students would be an acceptable time. I also recommend that the secondary school day run from 8:50 to 3:35. The recommendation provides a reasonable alternative for elementary schools and a start time that mirrors the research on adolescent sleep needs and patterns. The implementation timeline for the changes is school year 2016-2017, thus providing a full year for transition to facilitate family schedules and necessary adjustments for local childcare providers. Tonight, this item is presented to the board for your action. As you know, the recommendation that I've made is to change the start times, and it is also a similar recommendation to that made to the school's start time committee.
Board members, is there a motion?
I move that we keep the school's start times the same.
Second.
Okay, we have a differing motion on the floor. Any discussion?
I'll start. Each time we've talked about it, I've definitely had an argument about the reasons why I don't want the start hours to change. Having a freshman in high school, you know, it's hard to come and speak before a board, so I understand why a lot of people don't come out, even though I really appreciate everyone that did tonight. And for those that may think, you know, I feel like I'm elected because I hear the voices of our community, and I listen to them. And for some that believe changing may be the right thing, I believe it's not. And so, for those that do believe that it's the right thing to change, I think there's a very large, and we've heard tonight, and I've heard consistently from my teenage daughter, from parents that have younger children, all of them are saying, we don't want it. Tonight, we had a broad look at the whole community. It wasn't from one area, it was from all the different areas of our community that are saying, no, we don't want it. I had a grandmother call, and even though the survey shows we might not have older siblings as much as we think taking care of younger ones, I had a grandmother call. She said, I'm disabled. I cannot anyway get my grandchildren fed and on the bus by seven o'clock in the morning. And for me, if we have buses at 7:05 at some of the high schools in Shawsville and Auburn, and we're only backing up school start time change ten minutes, how in the world are we going to abide by that no earlier than seven o'clock when you've got children coming from Huffville Road on the other side of Pollock that take forever to get to school? I don't understand how we can do that. Those are some of the problems that I have with it. Anybody who gets behind a school bus in the mornings for early education, and they watch those little five-year-olds try to get on the bus, they can't even hardly get on the steps, and we've got four-year-olds doing it too. For me, we've got high schoolers that know enough to stay out of street and traffic way. Four- and five-year-olds don't. And in a perfect world, every parent would be with them, but we don't live in a perfect world. And, you know, I can just see those great parents that might say, you know, I've got little Johnny here who's not feeling well this morning, mommy will watch you, or daddy will watch you get on the bus, and they don't know to stay out of harm's way, but older children most likely do know to. So I can't support this. I just can't. I think it's wrong. I know we have a phenomenal group of educators that have come up with great plans, but for me, as a community citizen, that hear the ideas of my representative, I just don't think it's right. I can't support it, and I won't support it.
Anyone else like to speak?
Yeah, I've voiced my opinion also, not in favor of this. You know, I understand there are studies out there that say, yeah, adolescents need to have that extra rest, they cannot fall asleep, they cannot wake up. I do not believe that to be true of all children. I do not believe that to be true. Right now, we are hiring folks at my job, and some of these folks are almost right out of high school. They have to be at work at 7:30, if not earlier in the morning, and they're there. And they stay until they have to get, until they're told they can go home, because that's what they have to do. Going to school is our children's job. You know, it trains them to be able to be adults and be productive citizens. And if we're just constantly saying, we're going to do this to make it easier, we're going to do this to make it easier, I don't think we're doing them justice. You know, I do not believe that we should put our young students at risk, and there's absolutely nothing that says that it's going to do them any good. You know, these theories that, eh, probably won't, I don't get that probably won't for thousands of students and thousands of families. That's not a good enough reason for me to change everybody's life. And to think that we would do this for a year or so and disrupt families, and then, oh, maybe it didn't work so well, and we flip it back, that would just be outrageous. oh, maybe it didn't work so well, and we flip it back, that would just be outrageous.
Any other board members like to say anything before we put it to a vote?
I'll make a few comments, too. First of all, thank you all so much for sending all the emails and coming here to speak. Appreciate it that much. As a mother of three, as a scientist and engineer by training, and as, as an educator by strong interest, I weigh the pros and cons of the possible change very carefully. I'd like to share that. And I admit that change is hard, and there will be sacrifices, and adjustments will be made by our families. But I strongly believe that there are two very important undeniable facts out there, and we cannot ignore, at least I cannot ignore. Number one, best student academic performance observed when students are taught at the times they learn the best. And this is valid for elementary schools earlier in the day, and later for the middle school and high school students, just for their learning. And due to biological changes in the, their sleep cycles, just, just plain biology, middle and high school students cannot fall asleep. They can go to bed at 9:00 if they have plenty of time to do so, but physically, it won't be easy to fall asleep. They can be trained, but it is not biologically feasible. So though I know that this change will not be the only solution to fix all the possible problems that our teenagers may have, but it is a really big piece toward the right direction, and it has been applied by many school districts in the nation past 15 years. So I would like to emphasize also, today's elementary school kids is the middle and high school students in couple years. So I see it as an investment for their better health and academic performance for the future. That's why I'm in support of the change.
Okay. Board members? Before we vote, I do wanna offer just a couple of comments. I have been against this from the start. It's no secret. I looked for much information to be brought to change my mind, and while I did get a ton of information, I did not have anything that convinced me to change my mind. Unfortunately, two things that I find in this decision that trouble me. Number one, the lack of information, I think one of our speakers in public address said it earlier tonight, the lack of research that's been done to see how this affects elementary-age schoolchildren after the change is made. I don't know that there's been enough done, I don't know if there's been any done that's credible, and we're basing it, we've based our arguments for that, or against that, I should say, upon what we've heard other school, local school systems have experienced, without doing the same research that we're hanging our hat on for changing it. The second thing that I find very hard with this is that it seems as if this is going to be another one of those issues that goes down strand lines. It's not the way that we should try to be unified. It's not, it's not going to unify us. Half of us in this room, or half of us in the county, half of us on the board are gonna go away happy tonight, half of us are gonna go away defeated and upset, and it will take a toll on our unification. Our training last week kinda pre-warned us, and I remember as we were sitting there talking about our training, this very issue came to my mind as we talked about those four areas that, in which we base our decisions upon. And tonight, we're basing a decision on the prosperity model that we talked about versus the community model. And I have not been convinced that the prosperity aspects of this decision outweigh the community aspects. I think it's pretty obvious by those that spoke tonight, the amount of emails at least I've received in the past seven to 10 days, I think the community has spoken out pretty well that they are against changing school times. And I concur with that sentiment. So with that said, obviously, the motion on the floor is to keep the school's start times the same, so a yes vote is we're not changing, a no vote is to change. And I'm gonna ask for roll call on this, please.
Whoa, 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 that's not, that's not true.
Well, it would have to be another motion.
That's right. We're voting not to change, and that's all.
You'd have to have another motion.
Right.
Do what you're saying.
Okay. So we're voting not to change?
Correct. I would like to make one comment. I, I don't understand the strand part of your talk. This, this seems to be an issue. I, I've done some research also on this, and I've done a lot of research, and I've taught students for 30 years, from elementary students on up through high school students. And I'm not basing my vote on anything that has to do with the strand. I'm basing, basing my vote on the, all of the information that I've read, the experience that I have, and I have, I think I have vast experience, I think I've read about everything there is about to read this thing. So, that's where I'm coming from, so.
I think one of the things that concerns me, too, is when I first got on the board about eight to 10 years ago, we thought accepting the nutritional model for our school systems through the state would be a great thing. And I've watched it push students away from buying lunches, and I think that's one of the things that concerns me, too, is that sounded like a great thing, that if we do that, if we put nutritional food in the lunches, and we change and take all the fattening things out, that kids will eat it and they'll learn to like it. But we've got now, and it shows, the statistics are saying, kids don't like it, they're not eating it. As adults, we love it, it's great, but students don't. Those are the kinda things that concern me about making changes like this as well. A couple months back, we had an officer come in and also say that they buy beds for the regional jails based on third grade success rate. So that tells us right there that, that has to do with what our early elementary students are achieving and how they achieve. So, are we just gonna take a chance on messing that up? That's another concern I have of.
Okay. I think that's all we have to say. Roll call?
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
No.
Mr. Ivers?
No.
Ms. Corann?
No.
Ms. Woolsey?
No.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Motion failed.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommendation that was presented by Ms. Blackburn for changing the school start times.
I second that motion.
Any discussion?
I'd like to make a few more comments, if I may. I wanna thank all the speakers this evening, and I appreciate that. There's, there's one thing that only one speaker referenced, and that was the big picture. And I think we need to take a look at the big picture. If we continue to look at individual cases, then that's not gonna get us anywhere. We have 9,000-plus students in this county?
Ninety-five hundred.
And all of them weren't heard, and all their parents weren't heard. And unfortunately, I believe it's the parents who can sit back and say, "I'm all for it," usually don't show up to speak. It's those folks who are passionate and who are deadly against it who show up, and I appreciate that. But I can't, I cannot look at this through a microscope. I have to look at the macro picture. I have to look at this as large as I possibly can. And it doesn't take the individuals as individuals, it takes them as a group. And I'm looking at, number one, the disadvantaged, and research has, research has shown that this lack of sleep, or specifically the disadvantage, is so detrimental that most of those people end up dropping out. This is a possibility of having them stay in and graduate and become useful citizens, and I think that's overwhelming and powerful. Having worked in the school systems, I've seen elementary school kids come in at 8:00 in the morning, and I said, "Oh, my God, I wish I had them at 6:00," because they are so eager, anxious, and ready to go. That's only my opinion, and that's only 30 kids or whatever. If you go around and talk to most, I'm not saying all, but most elementary teachers, I think you'll find out that that's pretty much the rule. Students come in, young students come in, and most elementary teachers say, "Wow, they are really ready to go." They are. Now, talk to the high school stu, teachers. They come in, and first period, when I was teaching high school, I wanted those kids to have either a recess or gym to wake them up, because that's the way first period was. And I think that we've got, we've got a solution to this problem. And I think that this is something that will work. If you look at the big picture, all of the people who have elementary students, you can't see when they get into the middle school, you can't see when they get into the high school, when those wires start going crazy in those adolescent ages, when these kids start acting differently and doing different things. And that's when they need as much assistance as possible, and therefore, I would vote yes on this.
I, I take some exception when you talk about our disadvantaged students and refer to them as those people, and, you know, it will benefit those people. I, I take great exception to that, because these are our students and our families, and referring to them as those people, I think is a bit degrading. As I stated two weeks ago, I do not believe that starting school an hour later and getting out later is gonna make a difference in the issues that are causing issues with the students who are not achieving at the level we want them to. I believe there are other things that we can do, other than changing this time of school, to help those students. So I, I, you know, we can throw that out there all we want and try to make it seem like, oh, you know, we're gonna do a great service, and I don't see that that's, I don't see that that's going to be the case. There are too many other things that we could do in school systems all over this country and in society that would help people versus an hour more sleep.
I think not only the people that positively view this issue didn't come out, but there's a whole lot of high school sports students that are opposed to this issue as well, but they're involved in sports, they're doing homework, and they can't come out. And, you know, I, I hate that their voices couldn't be heard, because I've not heard one sports advocate person that agree with this decision. And we sat here through an hour's worth of recognition from smart athletic students.
Yeah, and, and I don't believe this is a, looking at it as an individual thing. From the time I get to work, just in my workplace, for the last several weeks, from the time I go and come into the building and go the length of the building, there are parents and grandparents stopping me, asking me what's going on with this, and that they're not in favor of it. Phone calls, emails, folks saying, "Don't do this." My big picture is looking at the whole family that's involved with this, and not just what's happening in the classroom, because, again, I don't believe this is gonna make that big of a difference. You know, I, I, I can't say it enough, I do not believe that if you help children understand, "This is the time you go to bed, this is the time you're expected to get up," that, that will happen. That will happen. You, of course, will have a handful of students who it doesn't happen with, but we can't blanket the whole district, because not every student is gonna be able to do that. I, I just cannot go along with that in any way.
Anyone else? Okay, roll call?
Ms. Bond?
No.
Ms. Franklin?
No.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Ivers?
Yes.
Ms. Corann?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. I'm moving on to the next agenda item, which is policy 6-5.7, field trips and excursions. This is the second reading of a revision to the field trip policy to clarify the school board's consideration.
Hold on, Mrs. Blackburn. Mrs. Blackburn is speaking, please allow her to continue.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. I'll start over. This is policy 6-5.7, field trips and excursions. This is the second reading of a revision to the field trip policy to clarify the school board's consideration for approval of out-of-the-country field trips. It is recommended for your approval this evening as a second reading of the policy.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Just a question. I don't remember exactly how that policy read, and maybe we just talk about it rather than we look it up. Did we cover what the students had asked?
Yeah. This is, this is designed to allow that to happen.
Good, good.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have a new policy for field trips and excursions.
Next item is the special education annual plan. The submission of a special education plan is an annual occurrence. Dr. Nelson shared the background of this plan at our last meeting. It's presented this evening for your action to approve.
So move. We approve it.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion for the special education plan? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Special education annual plan is approved.
Our next item is an overview of the high deductible health plan. As we have continued to work on the Montgomery County Public Schools budget, and as we have continued to look at our insurance coverage options, staff has shared a great deal of information with you about a high deductible health plan and the potential for adding it as an optional offering for our employees. It is offered in many of our surrounding school systems and is considered a desirable option for appropriate employees, as it offers the opportunity for significant cost premium savings for the employer and for the employee. This evening, Mr. McElandro and Sherri Hutchins, our insurance consultant from McNary, will provide additional information about the HDHP. It is an option that I recommend you consider for possible implementation with the next open enrollment period.
Good evening, Chairman Lyons, members of the board, Ms. Blackburn. Thank you. Tonight, Sherri Hutchins from McNary Consulting and I will provide some additional details on the high deductible health plan that was proposed in this year's budget. First, a couple important notes that Ms. Blackburn alluded to as well. The high deductible health plan is not going to replace any of the existing plans. It's not going to replace the PPO or the HMO. It will be a third option for employees to choose from for their healthcare coverage. There will be no changes to the HMO or the PPO designs. The HMO will remain as our core plan. We hope by the end of the presentation, the board will have a better understanding of the high deductible health plan and the money that can be saved from both the school board and the employees' perspective. Finally, the administration recommends that the school board offer health savings account to employees as part of this new plan. We will provide a short overview of the HSA and its benefits.
Good evening. I'm going to review just a few high-level impacts, if you will, of the Affordable Care Act as it rolls out for this next plan year, and how it impacts kind of the decision and the discussion that we've had regarding high deductible health plans. And we alluded to this at a former meeting, but the main component of this, as you consider the High Deductible Health Plan versus your traditional plans, is that going forward with your next October renewal, any co-pay, whether it be for your primary care physician, your specialist, urgent care, any of those co-pays will be applied towards your out-of-pocket maximum, as well as any prescription co-pays that you have and any of your co-insurance. So, all of those things will now begin in this next year, rolling into that out-of-pocket maximum. So, what that essentially means is that your employees are going to be hitting that number much more rapidly, so the plan would then pick up expenses at an earlier stage. So, that was part of the added risk to the plan that we were looking to reduce. Thank you. So, if we look at the slide that we're looking at right now, breaks down, it shows you, as Joe alluded to, the PPO and the HMO plan designs themselves have remained the same. And what this does is it shows the full monthly premium, so this is the full amount. This includes both what the employee will be paying, we'll look at that in a moment, and the school board's portion. So, this is the full amount. Comparing that over to the far-right-hand column, you'll see the bolded box that implies, first of all, just the High Deductible Health Plan component alone. That would be if the school board was not going to contribute any HSA seed money to that. The column to the right for the HSA actually shows you what that monthly seed amount is. And then, the total column is what, if you were to refer to, what is the full premium for the HSA or High Deductible Health Plan, it would be that final column to the right.
And that's a monthly?
Yeah, that's a monthly amount. However, the way that the HSA is actually going to be funded is going to be twice a year. So, the school board will actually fund the employees' half of the amount at the beginning of the year, and then mid-year, that fund another second portion.
So, I have a question about that.
Sure.
It's okay to ask. So, let's say we fund the first six months, and in that timeframe, they're involved in a car accident. What would happen?
Well, depending on, so let's say hypothetically, the individual has met half of their deductible at that point. If you have funded a portion of the deductible, so the individual, if it's a catastrophic accident, then they would be required to meet the second half of their deductible, and then the plan would pay it 100%.
So, it's not completely fully funded for their deductible until after that full year?
That's correct. The other part of this is, is that, once they get that second half, and they funded it, say, out of their own pocket, not out of the HSA, they can reimburse themselves out of that money halfway through the year. They just keep the receipts, they keep all those things, and they can fund themselves. They can pay themselves back, if you will, out of that seed money.
Once the second half gets added to it?
Yes, ma'am.
And you're adding the money in month one and month six, or what? So, you would get thirteen hundred, you'd get?
Depending on whether it's employee-only or family.
So, you'd get half in month one of the plan, and the remaining half in month six?
Correct. And that's not to say that that individual may also be contributing to their HSA. And if they are always, because that, we'll get to this in a moment, but one of the things that you hope when employees take advantage of these savings is that they're going to take those funds and put it into their HSA themselves, because it is their account. And to that point, we'll go ahead and flip over to the next. This is just a couple of assumptions to talk through, kind of what we looked at as you, the rates and the premiums that we just considered or just provided for you. But again, this is just a reminder that the school board still pays 100% for the HMO coverage for the employee-only. And also, because of the savings, because of the type of plan, the school board is obviously able to cover 100% of the premiums for the High Deductible Health Plan, which also includes funding the deductible in the full amount. A couple of, hold on one second. Where did I go? My apologies. One thing that I wanted to make note of is, if you look, when we start to consider how the plan can actually save money based on the migration, how many people are actually going to move from the HMO or the PPO into the HSA. And you'll see that we made just a couple of assumptions here, essentially, that per each employee that moves to the HSA, the school board will save $124.23. Now, there's a lot of calculation that goes into these particular types of assumptions that were made, but kind of a high-level way to explain it is to say that the savings are coming from the reduction in claims of the traditional plans, because you're taking individuals out of the more expensive plans and putting them into a less expensive plan. So, you have a reduction in claims. The plan overall has a reduction in claims. And when you're self-funded, that means that you're saving money. And in addition to that, because those individuals have been pulled out of the traditional plans, we also went through a rerating process and reallocated the premiums across the different tiers. So, that's why you saw the change in the PPO and the HMO tiers as well. Is that clear? I don't want to, it can get kind of convoluted.
So, the savings you see here, the $141,622, that savings is just purely with those employees that move over to the plan. The other savings that you see in the budget are due to those reallocations that Sherri alluded to, with changing the structure of those tiers, of those other plans. Because of the migration, those others could be changed. That's why there's a total, if you will, of a little over $500,000 in the total savings for the plans, as you see in the budget presentation for a little later.
So, these numbers on this chart?
When you say change in structure, you do not mean changing the benefit structure, you mean changing the cost, the premium cost?
Premium structure, yes, the premium structure.
Nor their deductible or anything?
No. Just the tiers. Right.
So, this, for example, PPO, employee-only, $733, that's a different number this past year than you're showing now.
That is correct, just like the HMO is, this year is $649.94 for employee-only.
Okay, so, taking the two slides that we just talked through and looking at this, this is what the actual employees will pay. So, this really helps tie it together. So, you can see, again, like I mentioned, if it's employee-only coverage, they have no premium. The school board covers that for HMO and High Deductible Health Plan. And then, the employee, obviously, for the PPO, because technically, the PPO is considered a buy-up plan, because it's the richest plan now that's offered, so that's considered the buy-up. If you also continue down, you'll see how the tiers allocate across. And just as a reminder, again, this includes the fact that the employees in the High Deductible Health Plan, their deductibles are met, because of the HSA seed money that the school board will provide.
Okay, taking that into consideration, an employee that is currently on the PPO plan this year and switches to the High Deductible Health Plan for next year, the chart here shows what the potential savings could be for that employee, both monthly and annually. The first two columns illustrate the projected cost for the PPO plan and the HMO, I mean, the High Deductible Health Plan. If we subtract the second column from the first column, we end up with the savings for the employee on a monthly basis. And then, we multiply that by 12, and we end up with the annual savings, potential annual savings for the employee. As you can see, there are significant savings for those employees that cover other than themselves, and especially if you look at the family. It will be stressed to employees in initial education that the High Deductible Health Plan, that careful planning of their healthcare costs need to be put into this equation. Initially, employees are going to be encouraged to place money into the health savings plan for future medical expenses. Similar, this slide also shows the savings for the employee that switches, that is currently on the HMO plan, that switches to the High Deductible Health Plan for next year. As you can see, again, there is significant savings for the employee-plus. So, that's employee-plus-one, plus child, spouse, and family. And again, it must be stressed to the employees that they have to use a portion of this, at least initially, to help plan for future cost.
They don't have to, but they should.
That is correct. It is optional.
It would be in the counseling that we do as people enroll, that would be something that would be stressed.
Absolutely.
But it would be the employee's option to do so.
Right, because, again, the risks that are involved in not placing some of that seed, some of that money into a health savings plan.
And these are, these particular accounts are, I mean, these are certified savings accounts. There are interests, there's interest, in some cases, there are investment options. So, it honestly is a savings vehicle for the employees for future medical expenses. And it's part of the overall education process, which is, I know we've said this every time we're speaking before you, but it's really the most critical component of all of this, the education and the communication, so that the employees really understand it.
And if they leave Montgomery County, that goes with them wherever they go.
It does. And it's not a use-it-or-lose-it, like a traditional flexible spending account, it carries over year after year.
And they can change it from year to year also, if they don't want to participate.
Correct. Yes, they would still retain the funds that are in the HSA. Let's say, for example, someone is in the HSA in the first year, and then they want to go to the PPO. Well, if the PPO deductible is not high enough to be considered a qualified High Deductible Health Plan, they can't use the funds, but they can still have, I mean, they're still there. They technically could use them, but they would be penalized from a tax percentage on the back end. So, it's kind of like, well, I won't need to go into that detail. I'm sorry. You can tell I do this all the time, I start to use random examples, and I don't need to do that. So, this is just a very high-level plan comparison that we wanted to show, just a snapshot. Again, it's just to reiterate the fact that none of the plan-designed features of the HMO or the PPO changed. And this kind of shows you the deductible, there is no deductible in the PPO or the HMO. The High Deductible Health Plan obviously has a deductible, but the school board is satisfying that through HSA seed. This compares the maximum out-of-pocket across each of the plans, as well as the doctor's visits, from an in-network perspective.
And that out-of-pocket is really one of the key drivers for why it's so important, if you pick the High Deductible Plan, that you put additional money in the health savings plan.
Yes, ma'am. It's critical that they do that. But remember that the seed money that's placed in there would lower that out-of-pocket maximum. Because if the school board's putting in $1,300 for an individual, their maximum out-of-pocket then drops $1,300 from 50/50 to really $3,750.
And what's the difference, the 50/50 is in-network and $10,000?
No, that's for employee and then employee-plus.
So, the next few slides, we walk through just a couple of ways and how an employee can save money with an HSA. So, obviously, we've talked and shown, the first obvious example is in the monthly premiums. Individuals, you can see, from maximizing the use of an HSA, essentially, there, it shows basically that you can pay for medical, dental, vision, whatever those additional qualified medical expenses are. They're the same medical expenses, that is the same IRS list, if you will, that applies to a flexible spending account. Again, all of these materials will be part of the education and enrollment process. But the biggest component here, and we'll definitely have financial examples to assist during open enrollment, too, is the pre-tax dollars. Helping employees understand that not only do you have access to this money, but you can set it aside pre-tax, you can save it without any tax penalty, and you can use it with no tax burden. I mean, you really have, like, it's a triple, a triple taxed benefit, if you will. And that's, I mean, that's essentially what the purpose of this type of plan is. We've talked through a couple of these already, as we worked our way up to these slides, but again, money that is not used in one plan year is not eliminated, it carries over through the next year. One thing we've not touched on yet is the IRS, because of all of the tax advantages to this, they actually set a maximum contribution amount per family or per single individual and per family. And per single currently is $3,350, and that includes the $1,300 that the school board is contributing. So, that just basically says that the employee could contribute the balance of that on their own, up to that $3,350 per year, should they choose so. Yeah, we've touched on that. So, the who, why, and what of an HSA, who would want to switch to a High Deductible Health Plan? The most common individuals that do are healthy individuals that have limited medical expenses. And again, this is part of the education process, where we like to really prepare individuals before they begin the enrollment process. We want people planning a month in advance of looking and reviewing, some people are going to be doing it for the first time ever, trying to understand what their medical expenditures are. People that are healthy are going to feel like, "I never go to the doctor, I don't take any prescriptions." But we're still going to want them to really examine, are you taking maybe over-the-counter things that could be covered under an HSA? Are there other things that you could be doing in a different way and improve your health condition even more so? Why would an employee choose a High Deductible Health Plan? We've talked about it quite a bit, the reduction in premiums, but also the ability to save tax-free the savings account for some future event that may happen. And the advantages to actually switching, there are more advantages, particularly in the way that we've pulled this together now, because the school board is supporting it so heavily. There's minimal risk to the employees, if any, unique situations that could occur within the first few months of the plan, those things you can't ever plan for. But then, there are still ways in which the employee could make themselves whole as, you know, more time passes by. But overall, there's definitely more advantages than disadvantages, if you will. I know this is a busy slide, it's not my favorite, but I just wanted to give you an example of some of the Q and A that will actually assist the employees to walk through as they're kind of making the decision whether or not they want to consider enrolling in a High Deductible Health Plan. If you look all the way over to the far left, it says, "I'm interested in learning how to make better healthcare buying decisions." Doesn't everybody want to do that? Obviously, if the answer is yes, then we're saying that it's, they certainly need to consider a High Deductible Health Plan, because that's honestly what these plans are built for. If you want to save money and you're willing to put in a little bit of work, it's a fantastic tool for that. No, we don't want to say, you know, if the employee says no, I have no desire to do that. There are still some other reasons that they may want to consider it. But moving on, "I'm healthy and don't anticipate high medical expenses." Again, very favorable match for a High Deductible Health Plan. If they're not, if they're not healthy and they have a lot of medical expenses, then it may not be the best option for them. They're probably going to want to stay in a very traditional-based process where everything is known, and there's nothing wrong with that. I mean, that's why you're offering the options that you are. Moving on to the next, "I'm willing to make time to manage my medical expenses." This is a key one, because, again, because of all the tax advantages, there are also tax consequences if you access those funds and you're not eligible to, because they're not, if you have a debit card to access those HSA funds, you're not going to have someone that says, "I'm sorry, your card was declined because these aren't eligible." That's not what happens. You actually use the debit card, and then you get dinged on the back end when the HSA bank provider gives you the tax document that says those funds were accessed, and you don't have a receipt to show that it was a qualified expense. And that's when the penalties hit. So... that's when the penalties hit. So if, there does take, it does take time, but that's why we work with the administrator of the plan to have online tools, educational tools, tracking tools, decision-making tools. All of this is part of the education process for the employee. And then, again, the last point, "I'm looking for tax advantages," then that's clearly going to be an option for, for an HSA or high deductible health plan.
So there are a couple of elements that will make this plan successful. First and foremost, the education of the employees, which we've touched on, is a vital element in ensuring the success. Employees must understand the benefit and risk involved in joining a high deductible health plan. Along with the education of employees, the, the employee must be willing to take a greater part in controlling their healthcare costs. I think that's key in this. They must be willing to, to look at this in, in a manner that they haven't looked at it in the past. To educate and assist the employees in making the decision, the Department of Human Resources will provide at least four different information sessions for employees to attend. Each strand will have at least one information sessions at one of their schools. Typically, these are done at the high schools, but due to sometimes to conflict of schedules, sometimes they're held at the middle schools. Attending these meetings in the Department of Hu, attending these meetings will be the Department of Human Resources and some payroll individuals, anthem representative to fully explain questions that they may have about plan, about the plan, and a health savings account representative. So that person from, from our third-party vendor. We'll also post on the Human Resources site, short informational video on the high deductible health plan, so people can access that at any time that they need it, and in case they're not able to attend one of the meetings. Additionally, we're going to post information and educational links for employees to better educate themselves, and if they just want additional information. Finally, the Department of Hu, Human Resources will always be available to answer questions for employees if they should have questions about the high deductible health plan. Questions?
Any questions, board members?
Are any large companies or school systems switching out of Anthem because of the identity thing?
I'm not aware of any. Maybe you can.
Well, I actually, I work with Chesapeake Public Schools, and they've been with Anthem for years, obviously. They're, no. They, and even, even aside from, I work with a number of school systems in the state, but aside from that, even individuals outside of Virginia, because other areas of Anthem were also impacted, even parts of the Blues in North Carolina. And I think unfortunately, we're in an era now where we're hearing more and more of this. And I think organizations have been able to contain, once it's identified, the outcome, at least from what we've been able to see. But no, I've not had any clients that are just pulling the plug and, and running. They're trying to let Anthem figure it out, and they continue to make progress and provide updates.
I will say this about Anthem. They did step up to the plate and offer that to all, anybody who had Anthem in the past several years. So it's just not our employees. They've been very responsive to questions that we've had about the hack that they had several months ago now. But the other thing is, is they, they mentioned that they get, they have a whole cybersecurity force, if you will. They tried to, they explained it as this, there's a person trying to break into your house, and they're searching your house 24/7, 365 days a year, and they're just looking for a crack. And at times, they find that crack. So, but they've been very responsive.
Any other questions? Could you refresh my memory just real quickly, the savings that we're proposing that we're going to make in the budget is based upon how many employees doing this, again?
Yes, sir. Ninety-five.
Ninety-five.
Yes, sir.
So obviously, we were to have more than ninety-five, it would be even more savings.
Yes, sir. We, we plan on updating the board as soon as we finish with open enrollment to let you know how many actually did migrate.
Okay.
So do we approve this addition with the budget?
Yes. The next time you see this will be Thursday evening at your work session.
Okay. Well, I'd just like to make the comment that, you know, always been steadfast that we stay with paying for our employees. But I see this as a great option for our employees too, and I'm all about making sure folks have all the options they can have. So I, I appreciate you all looking at this and bringing it to us and offering it, so that we may be able to offer it to our employees.
Thank you, Ms. Franklin.
And some may be getting a huge raise, it looked like.
It is some more disposable income, yes, sir.
Well, and again, that's part of your education, to help folks understand that may not be disposable.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Jason, you've been waiting for some time. So we have Jason Pack this evening, and as you all know, our third and final project in the $124.5 million bond has been opened at AMS when we opened in January. And tonight, Jason is going to give us the final update on the AMS project. Jason.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. Ms. Blackburn, thank you for allowing me one final opportunity to brief you on the new middle school project. Here we see the, the building itself. One comment that I get consistently is how well the architecture of the new portion communicates with the old high school. You know, I hear it from, from people that are within the building and within people in the community. So, and I can tell by the shaking of heads that a lot of you agree as well. When you first walk in the building, you'll see Ms. Donna here at the administrative reception desk. She is very happy with her, her new space there. She's the first happy face you see when you get welcomed to the building. Another happy individual is the school nurse. On the right, you can see the nurse treatment area. There's two treatment areas there, open treatment areas. There's also an isolated treatment area as well. In this next slide, on the left, you can see the beautiful media center that Ms. Weaver mentioned before. And on the right is a, is the band room with a class in session. The photo on the left is the serving line at the new kitchen. The photo on the right is the existing gymnasium with the refinished, existing wood floor. Looks like a brand-new floor, but it's not. If you'll notice in the background there, there's some nice new bleachers. In this next slide, the photo on the left is the outdoor basketball courts. If you look just beyond that, you'll see the multipurpose field with grass growing on it. We've had some excellent grass-growing weather here recently. In the photo on the right, you'll see the biggest change of late, and that's the demolition of the old middle school. We've got a completely bare field there now. And Mr. Lyons, I do have a brick from that building for you.
Very good.
Whenever you're ready to pick it up.
I want, where can I come?
You can come to the middle school. I'm still there.
All right. I will be there.
All right. So that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And for all your project work, Jason.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any question?
Sure.
The curtain in the gym is, what's the noise situation with that?
That's just to divide the gym.
I know. What's, but there's a class on the other side. What's, how's the noise element with that?
Uh, well, it's mesh at the top. That was something that was provided by facility. So you still get noise transmission.
Same thing with the band room?
Yeah. What's that?
I'm assuming the acoustics, the brown squares or rectangles, is that working out well?
The band room, Jason.
Oh, the band room, yes. Yeah, that's working out great. Yeah, the acoustics in there are wonderful. We've got this nice vaulted ceiling, and there's these pyramidal ceiling diffusers in the ceiling as well, along with those along, along the wall. So it's, yeah, it's working out great. Any further questions?
Still under budget?
Still under budget, yes.
There we go. That's all we needed to know.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is textbook adoption. Some other folks that we've had waiting quite a while this evening, and I thank you for your patience. Tonight, this is an information item, and we're going to introduce to you the recommended new textbook adoptions in career and technical programs, in English writing, science, and social studies. The curriculum supervisors are here to answer questions you may have about the process or the recommendation. We also have the books on display in the anteroom to the conference room in the back tonight. We will have them on display for you again there next week before the meeting. And if there's any book that you specifically would like to peruse, you can touch base with the curriculum office, and we will provide you with that opportunity anytime in the next two weeks. So at this point, turn it over to the board members.
Board members, any questions about the recommended textbook adoption?
Yeah, there seemed to be a concern about a paragraph in one of the books. And I think I sent you an email on that?
Yes, you did. And I shared it at that time with the supervisor for social studies. Sharon is here, and if you would like for us to address that.
Sure, sure.
Thank you, Sharon.
Mr. Ivers, can you, do you have your concern again?
Pardon me?
Do you have your concern again that you shared with Ms. Blackburn?
The, well, I sent her the email. It was a...
The original email from the email?
Ms. Skinner sent, sent an email out and referenced a paragraph in the book.
Okay. I was just making sure we were talking about the same thing. First of all, I would like to say, I do appreciate the time that Ms. Skinner does spend reviewing these books. She's spent an, an exten, extensive amount of time reviewing the books, and, and I appreciate her, her time and her energy in, around that. But I will say, with the, the process that we use, we do start with state-vetted books. So the books that we look at are first vetted by the state, and we narrow them down based on what our teachers need. Our teachers go through that review process and look at each of the books. I don't doubt that there's bias in any book that we look at. And so much of the work that I do with all of our teachers is looking at the skills that we teach our students. We start with our standards of learning, but then we look at historical thinking skills, which includes analyzing bias in any book. That is one of the critical skills that we teach students. So part of the work that I do is encouraging teachers and working with all of our teachers to use other sources outside of a textbook. That is one secondary source. But we are very much focused on using a lot of primary documents, and our teachers will tell you that the textbook does become a secondary source for them, as it's intended. And they teach students to corroborate sources and question the sources, and that's part of the, the skills, and that would include questioning the text. There are any book that you read going to be bias comments like that. And I think it's important for our students to be able to have practice in questioning all of the things that they read and all of the things that they hear. So that's a big part of, of our work. When I talk with all of our government teachers who reviewed the texts as well, majority of them said they use the text as a secondary source, and especially for government, they are very much focused on teaching mostly, what I heard, mostly from the Constitution and mostly from current events and real-life examples. As our 18-year-olds going into the world, their focus is on making sure that they're prepared to be citizens that are questioning all the time. And so that has been the biggest focus of their curriculum, as far as the, from my teachers and what they're looking for in a text.
Well, from what I remember about that particular paragraph is, when I read that, I thought to myself, wow, this is a great educational event right here. It seems to me that if I had a class of kids and somebody referenced that, that would be an event where, where we could engage and learn. So I, I felt comfortable with it. And if, and I think that's, that there are probably all kinds of paragraphs in all of these textbooks that, that are, are great learning moments. And if teachers can grasp them and, and do that, it's, I think it's great.
And I think Ms. Skinner's email, if I recall correctly, she had issue with either of the book that we, that we were looking at, and wasn't a fan of either. And I think that's where tough choices has to be, have to be made as far as instructional resources. So that's where I rely heavily on what our teachers are looking for in a text and the resources that come with those, with the resources that we purchase for the, the students.
How many books usually do we kind of pilfer through as we decide on which books? As you said, you mentioned two right there. How many government books were actually considered?
I believe that on the state list, and I'll have to go back and check myself, but I believe on the state list, they're typically between three and four. Our teachers narrowed the choices down really quickly to two that they were interested. One was a current, the, the newer version of the current book. And then our teachers had used this McGruder's book in the past, and many of our teachers were interested in kind of reverting back to that. But like I said, a lot of our teachers said openly to me that they use it as a secondary source, only as a supplement, and it is not their go-to instructional resource. So I believe for this decision, it was narrowed down between two texts, which I, no, we, I can provide those if you're interested, and I think you just have the one to review.
I did have another comment. I'm sorry. I, I looked, I looked at the price of these books, and I'm thinking, you know, one book is almost an iPad, give or take. So...
I think the...
Ms. Blackburn?
The government text is about $84 a book. The AP government text is about $160. But those are typical of AP, because they're a college board, and they're pushing those, those kinds of texts, but...
It just seems to me that this is an incredible amount of money for a resource, when, when most, if not all of this information is, is in a iPad or whatever. Anyway, just, I guess we're headed that way, aren't we?
For using these as secondary sources, how do we decide when, oh, maybe we shouldn't buy a textbook for everybody in government?
Well, at this point, we actually, we're, I think we're making great strides in how we use our resources. And so we actually survey each of the teachers and ask them specifically, how do you use this text? If they don't use the text as far as needing a, an actual book for each student, then we have been purchasing class sets. And so if it's a resource that's used as a refer, you know, refer to this, then we make the class sets available. If a teacher heavily relies on the textbook, then we purchase that per student for the, that teacher's caseload. But it has been, I think we've been making, like I said, great strides in using our resources effectively, based on how they're used in the schools.
Well, I, I'm glad that you brought up the point that teachers really have to focus on outside resources with many of the textbooks that are written today, because textbooks have historically not been accurate in depicting contributions of minorities in this country. And teachers have had to go outside to do that, to be able to educate our children, give them a full picture of what actually has happened in this country. And I know when my daughter was in school, she was constantly, when she was in world history, constantly bringing in resources, talking about contributions of other folks, particularly minorities, in this country, other than just the white population. So I am very glad that we have something that children can again challenge to say, is this really what happened? And if so, what were the events and things that caused people to make statements like this? So I'm, I'm glad that those comments are there, so it can challenge folks to think about what really is happening and has happened in this country.
And I think that's, some of the work that we've been doing with teachers for a long time is questioning sources and asking who else, whose perspective is not here, whose story is not being told, and challenging students to find those. At the middle school level, we've actually invested in document-based question sources. And so that is the work of students working directly with the documents, the, you know, all the different kinds of documents that we have available to us to answer a big-picture question, because the, if the idea is for us to become critical thinkers, we've got to practice those skills often.
Any other questions, board members? So we will actually vote to accept this in a couple of weeks, is that correct?
That is correct. It may, I think it's May 5.
Okay. Yeah, I just would just say, please, if you have any questions, take a look at the books. I did so last year. Had some questionable things, but I think, just like has been shared, you're going to find a, it's going to be hard to find a book that you 100% agree with. And so it is a difficult task, no doubt.
I want to thank Judy Borelsky and Sharon Zuckerwar. I want to thank Judy Borelsky and Sharon Zuckerwar and Rick Weaver for the work they've done in the process of selecting these textbooks. It's not a one-person operation, and so they do a great job getting input from our teachers and others. So thank you very much. I know you're glad we're at the last item. And when you know it's budget again. I'm going to try to skinny this down a little bit, so it's not so very long, and just make a few key points. And then you have a PowerPoint that's attached to your agenda item, and you also have a hard copy of the budget that is in that PowerPoint that we gave you just a little while ago. So let me first of all tell you that on April 13th and April the 20th, the supervisors indicated their support of the addition of $156,249 of recurring revenue to the MCPS budget. And they approved that last night when they approved their budget and adopted the tax rate. So the gap that we've been looking at has been about 1.49 or almost 1.5. So now the gap is going to be down to 1.3. The supervisors did not fully fund the $775,000, which is the capital items that we've been saying that we hoped that they would, but they did put that 156 there towards it. And they agreed that they will discuss it again when they discuss the entire June windfall, they call it the windfall revenue, as well as the availability of the bond money and/or the fact that Montgomery County Public Schools may have, very well have carryover. So they're going to talk about it again on Monday, April the 27th. So let me show you what we have this evening. First of all, you receive the information tonight about the high deductible health plan, which is something that I'm going to definitely recommend. So either look at your hard copy that you have, or look at the PowerPoint, and I'm going to ask Katie if she would pull that up there so that folks can see it in the audience as well. And I'm going to talk about some lines, because what I'm going to do is give you a preview of what I intend to recommend for your consideration on Thursday night at your work session. That way you can digest it and either let me know or come prepared with what your questions might be on Thursday evening, or other ideas or suggestions that you have. So if you look at line 18, that line is the increase in insurance cost. And I will be recommending that we implement the high deductible health plan, and therefore this line is going to go down to $211,341, or an increase of 2.3%. And if you remember, this line started out over $900,000. So kudos to both McNary and to Joe McElandro for the work that they've done with trying to find good options to reduce our healthcare costs while maintaining a very high level of plan coverage for our employees. Line 21A, this is a new addition, and it's a cost savings. I'm recommending that we offer the early retirement incentive option this year. It'd be the first time we've offered it two years in a row since I've been here, but we do believe that we would have at least 10 participants, and for each participant, we estimate saving $14,000. So that's $140,000 savings. So line 22 is an adjusted subtotal for personnel, and it goes down to $88,234,408, $234,408, based on the changes that we, that I'm recommending to line 8 and 21A. There are no changes then in the section of the budget utilities and fixed charges, so move on down through that. There are no changes recommended for services, supplies, materials and equipment. So moving to the last section of the budget. In line 65, and this is in the capital area of the budget, I'm suggesting that we defer the $150,000 additional technology to another funding source. And it still can come from the supervisors with their June revenue. It could still come from other undesignated funds that they have, or from the bond revenue. But ultimately, we would also have a fallback position for looking at our own carryover to fund it. I definitely will be recommending that it be funded, either from carryover or from other resources that we get from the county. And I remain optimistic that we will get some additional money from the county. Line 67, reduce the current funds for additional buses to $176,987, and defer the balance, which is $173,013, to another revenue source. And what I did, I used basically the $156,000 that the supervisors added to keep these two additional buses on this line. It'll be real close as to whether it exactly buys two or not, but I believe that it will. And so we would come back in another funding source and again, look at the opportunity to buy two more buses.
How many did we get last year?
Last year, we have two that's always in the budget, and then we bought two, and then I asked you all to convert the two teacher units to buses, and the supervisors approved it. The two reserve teacher units that were in our carryover plans, so we bought six. So I'm hoping that in the final analysis with this budget, we'll end up buying six again. But for right now, with the change I'm recommending, that would have us buy two from our regular budgeted funds and two from that $156,000, basically, that came from the supervisors plus a little bit more. Line 69, I'm recommending that we defer the $250,000 in additional funding for building, repair and roofing plans to another funding source, again, either to additional revenue from the supervisors or from our own carryover funds. Line 70, defer the safety grant match of $25,000 to another funding source, either the supervisors or our own carryover. And the timeline for that grant to come out is usually not until August, so I do not believe that it would have any negative impact on our ability to again, apply for and hopefully receive the state safety grant funds. Line 71, so the adjusted subtotal for the capital is reduced to $812,912. I'm sorry, I'm getting a little tongue-tied with the numbers. Line 72, the total budget is reduced to $100,505,755. Line 73, the total available revenue is exactly the same, based on the board of supervisors' planned additional revenue, recurring revenue transferred to us. Line 74 represents the potential for a balanced budget. There are probably three other things that I need to say. The cost for areas that have been deferred for funding is a total of $598,13. And I believe that there will not be an issue with funding those items based on additional revenue from the supervisors and/or the use of our own carryover funds. Second thing, carryover history. A review of the carryover patterns for the last six years shows that carryover hit the lowest levels in 2011 and 2012, and 2012-13. And you'll recall that those were our two toughest budget years. And at that point, we had $431,000 in carryover. That is less than a half a percent of our total budget. And the next year, we had $531,000. Prior to that, the district, I looked at a six-year history, the years prior to that, the district had routinely had 1.2 million to a high, one year, of $2.7 million in carryover money. So what I see, based on last year, and what I'm thinking we're going to have this year, is that our carryover patterns are moving back towards the $1 million, or greater amount. And that's not unusual. 1% of a $100 million budget for a carryover is not a large carryover. So just so you know, I think we're making a transition. Then finally, there's an open issue that will be a topic that we really need to spend some time with on Thursday night, other than anything else that you want to talk about. But the open issue that we're going to need to do some discussion about is that the budget as it's proposed this evening does not include a compensation improvement plan for the employees at the top of the scale. The superintendent's recommendation is going to be a bonus plan of 1.5% to be paid from carryover funds so as not to add another artificial step to our salary schedule. In conjunction with that, I will recommend that the board undertake through carryover a, an evaluation of the need for market-based salary range adjustments. So that instead of creating these artificial steps, 31, 32, 33, that we go back and adjust step 30, so that it has a range that's more in line with what the current market values are. The anticipated cost of a market study like that, for example, our salary plan we're using now is built off the Evergreen study. So Evergreen has a lot of our information, and they gave us just a ballpark estimate of about $29,000 to do a market analysis of our positions. The other one we know we need to do, you know, in addition to doing a comprehensive look, is that we also need to take a look at how we're going to integrate that part-time incentive into the salary schedule, as opposed to having it some, you know, trial balloon that's out here at year three or whatever. So it really does become compensation. So that's the open issue. And on Thursday evening, Joe and John and Katie and I have been doing some work on options and what the different options cost, anywhere from $100,000 to $160,000 doable opportunities. But the difference is, if you put it in a bonus plan, it does not go into their VRS, and it does not guarantee that it's reoccurring. The second, the disadvantage is that it creates another artificial step on the salary schedule. So that's the big one that I have. So that, any questions that you have, I'm happy to answer, or I'm also happy, you know, tomorrow or, you know, Thursday evening to try to, you know, spend a little more time on that one. But it is, it is one decision point that I think we need to spend a little time on.
I agree with you, those are topics we need to address. I do have a question with line 70. Can you elaborate on what the safety enhancements are?
Okay, the $25,000 is the grant, is the match for the state grant. So we've been doing the state grant for the last two years. The first year, we got $60,000, and we did, help me, somebody...
We did the Aphones, Ms. Blackburn.
Pardon?
We did the Aphones at each school.
That's correct. We did the Aphones. And then this past year, we did something with uninterrupted power supplies. We got $100,000 this year. And so, our intent is that we would again, apply for the full $100,000 grant, but you have to show that you spent $25,000 also. So that's what it is. Sorry, slipped my mind, thank you very much. How could that, seems like it was only yesterday, how could that slip my mind?
Yesterday seems to get further and further away.
It sure does.
And at this point, it is.
Well, it's almost tomorrow. It is.
Any other questions about the budget, board members?
In terms of our process, budget, rest of the budget process, we have work session on Thursday. Are we still going to have our public hearing on Tuesday, the 28th?
The second public hearing is an option for the board, and you scheduled it as an option for the board. You have done it some years, you have not done it other years. This is a year in which it appears that you have largely resolved the issues, or have the potential, and there appears to be agreement on the board of a way to resolve those issues, and would not necessarily generate the need for a second public hearing, but that is again, at the board's discretion.
Board members want to speak into that?
I would suggest, can we wait to Thursday to make a decision? Or does it need to be a week in advance?
We don't need to meet the mandatory notice requirements because we've already done that for the year. But in, when it comes to scheduling an ad for the Roanoke Times, they are waiting for us to do those ads. They love us, we love them. So it's okay. So I was hoping that there would be a decision for tonight because they were, they were extending that deadline.
What does that ad cost?
About $200, $250.
What's Board Central feeling about having the meeting or canceling the meeting next Tuesday?
I, go ahead. You know, we changed things up and ended up doing the second hearing because traditionally, we would make a decision about the budget at the same time, the same evening that we did the public hearing. And the feeling was that it seemed as if we had already made up our minds, and what was the point of having folks come and talk to us? So that's why we did another public hearing and then made the decision on another night. So that's where we were, because it used to be, we voted on the budget immediately after we did the public hearing, after discussion.
It was also at a time when we had some very contentious issues remaining on the, in the budget in terms of trying to balance it, and some changes that were made because we had no idea what our revenue would be.
Right.
I can do either way.
I don't know that there, I don't know that there is a need to do it. I'm fine with not doing it. Does anyone have any strong opposition to that?
The first meeting in May is when we would approve the budget.
I'm okay with not having it as long as it doesn't set a precedent that that's what we will always do. Because I do think when there is, I mean, with the pay-to-play issue is when we decided not to do that. And, you know, I hate to say, okay, we're going to change it, because there's not anything on the board, on the, you know, budget that's a big issue like that, but then years from now, oh, well, we generally don't do that, and it reverts back to that. So personally, I'm okay with not having it, as long as that issue doesn't come back on another time.
I think you could always make it a part of your planning process and then make a decision when you get a little closer and know your revenue, whether you feel the need to have another one or not.
I agree with that as well.
I like that idea.
Well, I'm going to weigh on the side of, we've been doing it for a while, and I think input is always good, because, just because we don't feel that something's contentious, doesn't mean that someone else doesn't, and they want us to hear about it before we make that decision. In a form that's just for them and not for just three minutes before the meeting when we make the decision. My thought.
Okay, so I hear some yeses, I hear at least one potential no. Do we want to do a straw poll? Where are you, Ms. Wusley?
I say we cancel it.
Okay. Mr. Ivers?
Yeah.
Cancelled?
I think we should cancel it.
Ms. Graham, Ms. Vaughn?
I see both sides to it.
I'm sorry?
I see both sides to it. I'm okay with keeping it.
Okay. Ms. Franklin?
I say we do it.
So at this point, we have four cancels and two not cancel it. I, again, I agree, I don't know that we do need it. So I guess that's five to two, let's go ahead and cancel the meeting. My, obviously, that changes our agenda item for Thursday, because now we're not approving a budget for public hearing.
We'll fix that in the morning.
So at that meeting, we would just be budget discussion, just a work session?
Yeah, just a work session, no public address, that I see on the agenda, so... Okay, I guess we'll switch back to the other meeting now. Moving on to unfinished business, do any board members have any unfinished business that they would like to address at this point? Thank you, Ms. Blackburn.
You're welcome.
Yes, in the board update, probably about six weeks ago, we received information related to the surveys on the school scheduling. And this was, this was an item that folks have talked about a lot in the community. And I would like to have a presentation so that folks are able to hear exactly what those surveys showed as a presentation to the board.
If that's the wish of the board, we're happy to do it. It probably would be May seventeen because we have two presentations planned for May five.
Board members, anyone else want to speak into that?
I'm not clear, what, what are you asking for again?
A presentation of the surveys that were taken as far as the
New schedules.
The schedule changes in the schools.
A few weeks ago, when Ms. Blackburn talked about the secondary schools and during that presentation, didn't you talk quite a bit about the schedules at that time?
I did.
Okay, what do you want in addition to that presentation?
I want it to be a presentation on the schedules so people understand it is a presentation about the schedule change in the surveys and not with other information.
That was quite a bit about the schedule.
That's what I want.
I, I don't need any more information than what I've seen.
And it's not necessarily me, be clear. It's not, I have the information. This was an issue that was in front of the public, or the public constantly was talking about for a great deal of time and still are. And if we did the survey to see how things are going and how people are feeling, I believe then we should do it in public so those people will hear. This is what the board, you know, this is a presentation to the board of what we found in public.
How transparent has that been to the public?
I'm going to ask Jennifer to help me with that just a little bit. Last year, we did pretty much posted the summary results and all that kind of thing. Right this second, I don't remember what we did other than sharing this year's results with you all. You know, there was no consistent input from it that said we needed to change or go in a different direction. So I don't think we did a, a public posting of the summary results or anything this year, which we could still do.
Well, my question to the two of you is, we just made a decision on what we were going to do with this. And we want to be as transparent as possible. Have we been? And will a presentation solve that problem, or don't we need it?
They're talking about different kind of schedule, Mr. Ivers. Not talking about start time schedule, but actual, the block scheduling and the way we changed the middle school.
Oh, okay, I thought you were talking, that's why I was wondering, what are you, you're talking about the block scheduling?
Yes.
It's a hybrid block schedule.
Yeah, I'm look, I'm trying, I'm looking back at the board updates, trying to find where it was. Scheduling surveys, there it is, it's on February nineteenth. I'm okay with having a presentation. I, I agree that we could be transparent about that, so.
And I don't see this as an issue of being transparent. I just see it as an issue of, an issue that was, you know, people were very vocal about and concerned about. And that we hear this as a presentation to the board as to, okay, this is how things are going, and not just in a, a document that is sent to the board to say, okay, this is how it went.
Tell me what the pleasure of the board is, and I'll make sure you have it.
Jamie, where are you on this?
I'm okay to say it because I got a lot of negative feedback when the scheduling changed. So I'd like to hear if that's just people kind of, you know, voicing an opinion, or if that is an accurate statement.
Marty, you have any input?
I'm okay with what was presented to us, give it to us.
Dunin?
You know, public finished the survey, but I, you know, I can't remember right now how much they find out what the survey was. So, you know, I can't recall if they, we relayed the information of the survey back to the public. So maybe in that sense, it would be good to have a brief presentation so openly they can hear what the results are.
Yeah.
I kind of agree with Dunin, I, I'm not.
I mean, I remember.
I agree either way, but I, yeah, okay.
All right, sounds like you have a yes on that. Give us a presentation, we'll plan on the seventeenth at this point. Okay, any other unfinished business, board members? Okay, moving on to new business. Does any, any board member have any new business that they would like to present?
Yes, I do. I will make a motion to accept Ms. Blackburn's resignation as Montgomery County Public School Superintendent effective October first, two thousand and fifteen.
Second.
Any discussion, board members?
Uh, yes. I've been in the public school arena for over forty years, thirty-three in Virginia, and the last eight here with Montgomery County Public Schools. And the last five and, five years and two months with Brenda Blackburn. And it's been a pleasure to end my career with who I consider one of the top educators in the Commonwealth. I consider, I've worked closely with seven different super, superintendents, and Brenda fits in with the best of them. She has set a standard of excellence for Montgomery County Public Schools. And I'm sure that she will understand when I vote no to allow her to resign. It is the only token I have of appreciation for what she has done for over the last five years and two months. And having said that, I think you caught in there that I will not run for a third term.
Well, I haven't worked in education as long as Mr. Ivers, but I've been here for a few short years with Ms. Blackburn, and I've enjoyed working with you. And I will vote yes because I know it'd be great not to have to open a school in another year and wake up in those snow mornings if you don't have to. So I hope you get to enjoy those, those days.
Any other comments, board members?
Well, it has been a pleasure working with her too. I wish I could say no and she can say with us. But as, as Sarah said, I think we have to acknowledge the fact that she has to pick a different, exciting path, hopefully, for her future. We wish her best.
I wish you the very best too.
Anyone else? Well, Ms. Blackburn, I have appreciated working with you. And it is both, I, I'm kind of split down the middle. I, it's with pleasure because I know you're moving on to do something else that you're anticipating and having fun. But again, I'm sad. I think we've, you've done a great, great job over the past five-plus years, and especially over the past year or so that I've been a part of the board. So thank you for your service. And with that said, I don't know that we need to do a roll call, but maybe that's more appropriate, so why don't we do that?
I want to vote at the end.
I'm sorry?
I'd like a vote at the end myself.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Ivers?
No.
Ms. Corinne?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes. All right, we have accepted Ms. Blackburn's resignation. That will be effective September thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, October first, whatever.
I'm sorry, the motion was October first.
Right. I'm reading September thirtieth, I'm sorry, on here. So we'll get the date straight, we have the date straight. So that obviously sets into motion our work as a board, as it is our responsibility to hire a new superintendent. And we've already discussed earlier what those steps are, and we will start those in the morning. Any other new business, board members?
Assistant of Montgomery County Educational Foundation, I supported the construction and consolidation of East Montgomery Elementary School, the construction of Pricesport Elementary School, Auburn High School, and the renovation of Auburn High Middle School, and the construction of Blacksburg High School. My wife and I have donated the majority of my school board's salary to the Ivers Cummings Educational Scholarship Fund, which is given away annually to assist Blacksburg High School students to further assist his or her education. The scholarship has assisted twelve students so far. I'm extremely proud of the Montgomery County Public School teachers, administrators, and support staff that have made, that have constantly strived to improve a quality of education for all of our children in spite of the economic downturn since two thousand and eight. And I want the staff to know that you folks have been like a family to me, and I will miss that a lot, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ivers. Appreciate your service on the board and then as a member of the community. Any other information, announcements? You can see the upcoming school board meetings, one of which has been canceled now. Our retreat will also take place starting next Friday. Yeah, next Friday.
I get a time on that, I don't know that I ever.
We got it in the updates today.
It's four o'clock, isn't it?
Yes, I sent an email yesterday.
Yeah, I think so.
Yesterday, that had a detail of both days.
Gotcha, check.
Okay. All right, with that said, I can have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Any opposed? Oh, I'm sorry, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? We're adjourned.